Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting. It is June 9th, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay. I'll introduce the board. Tom Jacobs to my left, Sharon Brush, our Vice Chair. I'm Greg Van Houten, Chair. James Carroll. Justin Corcoran. Town Manager, Stu Hurd. And Linda Bermudez is recording. Thank you, Linda. We're going to start with the minutes from May 19th. Motion to accept.
I would say be accepted as presented.
Second motion, there's a second any discussion? All in favor? That is five. And the minutes from June 2nd.
Will they be accepted as printed?
Motion? Second for Jim. Any discussion? All in favor. We have four. Warrants for tonight. Tom, do you have any questions?
I do have a question on one of the entries. It's 306-965. McAdon Theater, Inc. Show tickets for $912.
That's a senior center activity. We buy the tickets in bulk. Sell them to the folks. So it's a wash for us. But we have to purchase early in order to be able to reserve seats.
I'm just wondering why maybe we don't have control over it. Why wouldn't we use Old Castle or something like that rather than someplace down in Salem, New York, or whatever?
Well, they do travel all over. I obviously don't pick the trips. Generally a senior citizen and senior center directive. And I think they try to please as many of the people that attend the center as possible.
Hope Old Castle would take that under advisement. That's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Chair?
Just one on page nine, Stuart. It's right after the big life insurance thing. That URS Corporation, is that for the street? It says Streetscape Kosher Drive. Is that the pathway thing that we're doing there on the side of this?
Yes.
Thank you. I thought it was, but I just wanted to be sure. That's all I have.
Jim?
No, sir.
Justin?
Nope.
I do not have any warrants for tonight.
Move their acceptance?
Oh, yeah. No, we don't have to.
No.
Sign it.
Yeah, just have to sign it. We have a public hearing tonight on the water bond. If there are any citizens who would like to address any other issues right now, invite them up to ask any questions or address the board. Anyone else? Please state your name and...
(inaudible) Bennington. Do you, as individuals, not the board or together, know what the status is of the solar bar, Barney Road, at 401 Barney Road?
We probably get that. Dan, do you have an update on anything on Barney Road?
My question was, do you know what the status is?
I do not know what the status is right, the latest.
(inaudible).
Okay. There you go.
The applicant, the folks that are planning to develop that project have submitted their notice that they plan to do application to public service board in the next 35 days. So they are not obligated to do so, but they would have an application with the public service board. They'll do the next month or so. Do you realize that Green Mountain Power is out there doing work on it right now? Anybody?
I did not. What's the nature of the work they're doing? Do you know?
They're running the new line for the solar bar. That's kind of confusing.
Onto the property they're running lines?
Right, to where they're going to hook out.
I mean, those, Green Mountain Power has the right to extend and install lines within the public rights of way. They don't necessarily have a right to go onto our property and do work there. They have not asked our permission for that.
Okay, well, I've got a letter from Green Mountain Power that says that they are doing extension work done by Green Mountain Power, someone who's providing the service for any customer associated with this project, the solar project. And that it's one side of the project construction schedule. So it's odd that you don't know anything going on up there, but it's going on.
Well, for Green Mountain Power to be getting prepared for the project itself, the assumption is the project will be approved by the Public Service Board. Now, we weren't notified by Green Mountain, as you were. So...
It's odd that they put that much money into something that hasn't even...
Haven't been approved yet, yeah. We can take a look. Maybe we should give them a buzz and just see if they're...
Can do.
What their status is with that, or their goals are.
Is there any reason why this board should be advised in advance and have as much information as the citizen has relative to this project?
Well, I would think so. As Dan has indicated, we haven't had much information from them other than that they have sent out their notice that they intend to apply. So we've been waiting for them to give us further information. Green Mountain Power is something entirely new to me. I didn't know that those lines would need to be upgraded. But we do have two solar projects, one on either side of the street there, that are under consideration.
The next question I have is, who is the owner of this project? And has that changed since originally the startup?
It's Encore Redevelopment is the owner. The town owns the land. They are leasing land from us, doing the installation at their expense, and then they sell the power back into the system. We get a break, a reduction in the power that is purchased there.
It seems like you guys are in the dark about something there. Because I have, in the same letter from Green Mountain Power, it says that the owner is the person who applied, and that has changed in the last 45 days. Now, I don't know if you know who you're doing business with. There's a number of people that are involved in this, and it goes way beyond Encore. There's Son Edison is representing the owner. And that person is unnamed now because the application to Green Mountain Power, they basically, the project didn't change, but they just cropped out one name and put a different name in there. So now, Green Mountain Power is doing business with somebody that is way beyond Encore. And I don't know that it's right and fair to the people in Bennington, the people that live next to the project, to have no clue who they're doing business with.
Well, I would agree with you. I would think that, you know, if there are changes being made in the ownership of the project itself, they will...
That's a good theory.
Well, they would have to alter their arrangements and their agreements with us as well. And they have not done that at this point.
I think the issue is that there's...
Mike, Dan?
...of financing. They have the right to seek financing for the project, so this is probably the major partner to provide financing. But it's all provided for in our contract with them, so I don't see anything out of the ordinary here. Encore Redevelopment is remaining involved with the project, and they're the lead developer.
The thing I'm wondering, if anybody is getting something from the government to do with this guy, and maybe the owner, the owner that was on the project 45 days ago and hasn't changed, is a different person, we don't know who that person is. We could be doing business one minute with a jerk mouth, and the next minute with tariffs. If we don't know the names of the people that were doing business with it, that's bad news. And business is as simple as sending an email to get that information.
Well, I can't speak for what Green Mountain Power is saying. Encore Redevelopment is the people we have a lease with. As Dan just indicated, they may be reaching out to Son Edison and others for financing of the project. But they would not be, Son Edison would not become an owner of the project. They're simply the bank standing behind the construction costs.
You might want to...
We will. We're going to look into it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We're at 6:12. Stuart, you want to...
Well, 6:30 is the public hearing. We did push it back.
Okay, so we're going to do the pilot project presentation now.
Yep.
And I don't know if we'll get the other one between. All right. We now have a presentation from the Mount Anthony Union Math Pilot Project. And I'd like to welcome Donna Leep and Katie Schonbeck to step forward. And you can come up to the table or use that mic, whichever's...
I know. What would you?
Fine, right where you are. Yeah, where you are is fine.
But you will need a microphone.
We're going to dance with you.
Yeah, in the general vicinity is probably a good idea.
And we're sorry about our reaction. First of all, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. I'm Donna Leep, from the SBSU Superintendent and Director of Strategic and Strategic Assessment. And this is my great partner, Katie Schonbeck, who is nominated as Teacher of the Year. So this was very much a joint project. I'd also like to thank Jean Jenkins and the Workforce and Education Committee, who have encouraged and supported us to work on this together. We really recognized the urgency of this and that the community is very interested and committed to helping to improve our students' performance in math. So we were charged with really looking into the pilot program that Katie was working on and some of the different strategies she was using with students. We took it from a very positive perspective, not what is wrong with what we're doing, but what is right with what we're doing, and really examined closely, how are we instructing our students in math? So we were asked to come tonight just to present to you about the successes and future plans for our math programs. And so we are here to do that. Katie's going to start with a little backup on the history behind the project.
So I think maybe two years ago, maybe, two years ago, Jean Jenkins gave me a call and said, Katie, would you be willing to sit down and discuss some of the things that we're doing in the high school? It's really pretty exciting, the projects that are going on. So for example, we had started an after-school tutoring program, free in the library, called After Math, to help kids with their homework, with test prep, and ready for SATs and all that sort of thing. I had started a very careful placement of students. So rather than just placing students as they're coming in from the middle school on just teacher recommendations or test scores, I was looking at the whole student, every single freshman that's in a high school. I was looking at to see if they were being placed in appropriate class. We extended that to include the placement of rising freshmen, so next year's sophomores to make sure that they're getting their math needs met. We realized that it was a trouble for a lot of students to maintain their math knowledge over the year. The high school is on a semester program, so many students take three long blocks in the fall and then a few short long blocks in the spring, which means that a student can take math in the fall but not take math in the spring. And for some students, this was fine. It allowed some students to double up so that kids applying to advance, who take a second math class during the year, this was great. But for the majority of our students, that gap was detrimental, particularly for 9th grade graders. So we implemented an additional support program. We have what's called a math lab already in place. So for taking algebra, you can have this math lab, which helps with the homework during the school time. But we wanted something to fill the gap and create a class called Skills, which allowed students to either move ahead. So students that wanted to move into a higher level of math could really fill these number gaps. Students that were really struggling could go back and fill in some missing pieces. So a lot of what we were doing was trying to, yes, raise the bar, but also trying to give students the support that they needed to meet those new expectations. So anyway, Jean said, could we sit down and talk about what's working and how it might spread to other parts of the high school and, I don't know. What can we do now? So I planned with her to the Workforce and Education Committee and talk a little bit about what we were doing. And said that what we really needed to do was to decide, I mean, it's all such really awesome, great feeling stuff, but let's really help the kids here. And could we focus our energies on those things that are really helping kids with this thing? We don't think of the other thing in this thing too. So yes, it's nice to have the true record, but let's focus our energies on what makes the most sense. And that's where the lovely Donna joined us. Thank you.
I have just a brief overview of the study that I presented to the Workforce Development Committee in February. So I have, this is still basically the same document, but you just can't, I'm going to print it. And of course, I'm not going to go over the whole study, but I would just like to go over the framework of the study and how we came up with the ideas that we actually researched for that study. So we really were looking at the global economy and what is happening through our workforce development overall, and how important math and science is for all of our students. But noticing through our research and looking at the assessment data here in Bennington, that there was a pretty significant gender gap. So we started to focus in on what does that, where does that gender gap come from, and how can we help all students achieve better in mathematics? And we chose gender because the data did show there was a need there, but also it's a clear research group. But it is more broad than that, and really can cover many subgroups of the population that are typically low achieving in math. So it could be by social or economic group, or it could be by gender, or it could be by race, it could be by any one of those things. But gender is specifically a category that you can study because it's quite clear in the definition and variables are a little bit more limited. So we were looking at students and looked especially at the girls and thought, well, how do we encourage girls in math and science? Because this is so important for the future, not just of Bennington, but really in a global way, we're looking at the importance of the female population in taking on many of these topics that are typically not what they would choose as their first option for a career. But we want to find ways to encourage them. So what is helping these struggling students to succeed? And how do we increase the impact of those methods? So on the front page, there is a diagram of the way we frame the study. First, we did look at all of the data of our math assessments in this school. And then we got more specific on looking at a survey of just the ninth grade students, all of the math students. And we asked them specific questions about their mindset about math, how do they feel about making mistakes in math, and also what are some of their career thoughts and options for their future? So many of the details in the little summary, and we certainly aren't going to cover all of this for you tonight. But the questions in the research study were, what is the mindset and reaction to making mistakes in math in the whole population of ninth grade students? How do female and male students in the selected sample subgroups respond to making mistakes, especially in math? And how do students in the selected sample group describe their experience in the math classes that have led to their success in learning math? And the success has been dramatic. So these students were the focus of our study. So we really, in the survey, and you'll see some of the results, we did also a survey on student interest in careers here in Bennington. And we found overall that 40% of the students would like to stay in the Bennington area. 60% thought maybe they would be looking at options outside of this area. And then there are also some specific details on the subject areas, the categories of careers that both male and female students will be looking at for their futures. And again, we did find that that was very closely aligned with the research on what students would be preferring for their careers. For instance, computer science was kind of surprising, that only 1.69% of the female students were interested, where 16.67% of the male students were interested. And again, in engineering, only 6.78% of the female students were interested in engineering, and 27.8% of the male students were interested. So there are some significant areas that we need to look. So after we did the assessment of the survey and the achievement data, we selected some students to interview and asked them specifically, what were the areas that really helped encourage them in math and science? So the results are presented in this short overview. And we looked at some of the program factors that might help students in moving forward, and Katie will talk a little bit about that. We looked at what the students themselves found very important in encouraging them in math and science. And it's very interesting that what they talk about the most, this group of students, is their level of confidence. And that they find in many situations, they are afraid to make mistakes. And it is a correlation between the beliefs and values of these students that frequently predict how they will achieve in math. So I just thought that Katie could talk a bit about her philosophy of how she encourages these students and brings them to a higher level of confidence and achievement, because it was very significant. And the students really spoke from the heart about what was working for them in studying mathematics. So after I talked with the students, I went back and talked with the teachers, and it really was quite an inspiring experience for me to hear, how the teachers are helping the students, and what are the strategies that they specifically are doing in this age group of students that is right at the cusp of choosing? What are their future careers looking to be? So it's very important at this age group to find out, how can we encourage? So Katie?
So the two things that I got from the study were that relationships, relationships, relationships really matter to students more than anything else. And if a student feels that here she has a strong relationship with a teacher, here she's much more likely to take a risk, to make a mistake, come back and try again. Relationships, relationships, relationships. So what that said to me was that the After Math program, which is math teachers sitting in the library, much different setting than the classroom, is a really great way to build those relationships and connect kids that might not be feeling connected to the teacher. So keep After Math. The second thing that I really heard loud and clear was that students wanted the opportunity to not only have math all year, but to be able to move up a level when they were ready to do so. So we have implemented two pilot programs this year for high school that will continue next year, actually expand. One is a co-taught class for ninth graders. It's math and science, so math, math and algebra taught together. That means that two teachers are available to a whole class of students for the entire year, the entire year, 85 minutes every day. What's your homework on first block? Here's what you're at, what you're at for second block. Don't forget, forget to study for that test third and fourth block. Really helps the continuity and the grade for those kids. Also, for kids that need to have this full year, but the 85 minutes of math is just, ugh, it's too much, we put in a short block, full year class this year for geometry, which has been incredibly successful, because they really like a lot. Next year, we're expanding that to two more sections of full year geometry and extending it to algebra. This says a couple of things for those students. Not only does it shorten the class time and give them the confidence that they have a class of full year, but they also are not having just part of the course. So what had been replaced before at the high school was, okay, I'm sorry, you have a hard time learning math, we'll just do a happy year, won't hit them as much, but it's okay, because next year we'll try to do a little bit more. And we're always playing catch-up with these kids. They are not in a good delicious catch-up way, right? Really trying to fill in a lot of gaps. The full year short block allows students to get through the entire curriculum. So no more B level. It's all A level college crap, even for the kids that take longer to digest math learning. So those are the two takeaways that I'm really, really excited about, and I'm looking forward to seeing others expand next year.
So some important changes in addition to what Katie was talking about is how this has stimulated our math curriculum committee in looking at, what are we doing for all students in our SBSU? And they have worked all year in examining, what are the good materials for our students moving forward, and especially in providing a consistent program, K to eight, so that there, you know, with our different schools going through different grade levels and all ending up at the middle school, we feel strongly that one important factor is to have a consistent program that goes all the way through. So they've worked very hard and have gotten a new math program approved, so that all students in our SBSU will have new math materials next year that are aligned with the Common Core curriculum. I know the Common Core has kind of a love-hate connotation around it, but it does have something in mathematics that's very important, and it's called practice standards. And if any of you want to look up Common Core online, you will be able to see practice standards. And much of what we're expressing here from our study does come up in terms of communicating math ideas, really being able to express not just the content or the how to do it, but many different ways to do this so that you can really facilitate learning for many different groups of students. And many other concepts that broaden the application of mathematics beyond just the tricks or the little ways that you can do the calculations. Math is more than that. Math is thinking. And I think that's one of the things that we really found through speaking with students and what works for them, that it's math thinking that we need to encourage. And so our new program, K to eight, will help. It's very strongly aligned with our high school programs, and we know that also will be a great incentive for us moving forward. So we're planning on some professional development for that. That will be happening, it's happening already, and it will be going from now on through next year to get teachers more aware, starting at early grades and even bringing an awareness to the fact that we do need to notice some of these gender issues and different groups of students who may not find themselves successful in the classroom. But how can we encourage them? Because most of the things that the students brought up in terms of finding a mindset that allows their math knowledge to grow, looking at strategic and specific information that will help them feel confident more, and of course, having female role models for their math studies, are all areas that will help our students moving forward to encourage achievement.
(inaudible). Yeah, we were asked to just sort of give you a preview of coming attractions, of where we headed next. One of the really strong components of this program was the beginning of a partnership between the SBSU and the business community. So math teachers have gone on tours of local businesses. I met with someone from the Bennington Museum to talk about partnering with a summer program that I'm doing for a ninth grade growth of advanced, keeping that in the summer, both here. We'd like to extend that relationship to include the families in some sort of significant way. So it's pretty straightforward, I think, the relationships between family and school really great, but it gets a little muddier and trickier. What does it mean to have a real relationship between family and school at the high school level? So that's something else we're also using to learn next. And I guess we want to leave just two seconds for questions, because I know you have other business. Shutting up for a minute.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't.
No, we don't. Very nice presentation.
How long has the pilot program been in existence?
Different pieces of it have been in place for a while. This is the third year of After Math. The intensive scheduling, looking at every student's schedule, has been in place for four years now for the freshmen, but this is the first year that we're including sophomores as well. The pilots, co-teaching math science class is new this year. The full year short block geometry class is new this year. So it's been going in pieces, which is part of why we asked for the study. So it's been going in pieces, which is part of why we asked for the study. We keep dreaming up all the time.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
I just have one question. Have the results of the pilot programs resulted in demonstrable results in standard math examinations?
A couple of things. Definitely more students are signing up for higher level math courses. So we offer now four different calculus level courses at the high school, statistics and AP calculus. We're going to offer an AP calculus course next year and honors level calculus. And those classes are getting filled. So those kids are coming from some place. I brought the AP results that I'll leave here with you to see, but so, yes, they're filling and they're performing.
Good. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Good work.
Okay, next item on the agenda is going to be the public hearing for the water system improvement plan. I will read the public hearing notice. Residents of the Bennington town, residents of the town of Bennington are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street, Lincoln Street entrance in said town on Monday, June nine, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty PM for the purpose of a hearing on the proposed three million dollar water system bond to be voted on Tuesday, June seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street, Lincoln Street entrance. The polls are open from seven AM until seven PM. The article on the ballot reads as follows. Shall the bonds of the town of Bennington in an amount not to exceed three million dollars be issued for the purposes of constructing a water tank, pump station, and water mains to address water pressure inadequacies in portions of the municipal water system? It's a yes and no answer. There's going to be a presentation right now to address some of the questions that were brought to the town and to our attention as a result of the last hearing. And we'll do that and then we'll open up the public hearing for questions or statements at that point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Terry Morrison and Jason Dolman will be doing a presentation, mostly a detailed presentation of the ballot, completed at the time, for voting. Is this an important question for the town? Or is this an important question for the water system? And I think we hope that a more detailed presentation will answer even more questions that were asked and answered at the last opportunity we had to discuss this. That I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thanks.
So for those of you who don't know, I'm Jason Dolman from NSK Engineering. I've been the consultant for the town of Bennington on this water system upgrade project since early two thousand nine, when we began the feasibility and then preliminary design of the project. And this is Terry Morse with Town of Bennington, who's the water superintendent. So firstly, we're essentially going to re-present the proposal and we're actually going to start with a problem statement. So the official designation of what we're attempting to address here in the problem statement is straight out of the Town of Bennington's operating permit, which is inadequate water pressure under peak and maximum flow conditions, including fire flow. And that, I'll quickly read the jargon, but there again, this comes right out of the Town of Bennington's current operating permit, which identifies that under the rule, the water supply rules, subchapter twenty-one dash seven and appendix A, part six and eight, the system shall be designed to maintain a minimum pressure of twenty PSI at ground level at all points in the distribution system under all conditions of flow. The normal working pressure in the distribution should be approximately sixty-five PSI and not less than thirty-five. The water system experiences, and this is a statement about Bennington's water system, experiences inadequately low water distribution system pressure during peak firefighting and maximum water flow conditions on the south end of town at higher elevations of the distribution system. So just briefly looking at the Town of Bennington's water system, and this is a colorful map, but essentially shows you right now what is the existing and what will be the proposed pressure zone configuration. So the Town of Bennington is, because of its changes in elevation, require various parts of the town to be under separate zones. And right now, the yellow and the blue areas that you see here is essentially the town's largest pressure zone. And this is the area where we have had the identified issue, which is essentially Stonehenge and what we call Crescent Boulevard and Margaret Lane. But these two core areas represent the largest portion of the system that is inadequate and identified in the permit as being deficient for maximum fire flow. So really, what does that mean? So from a real perspective, beyond the regulatory issues, there, just to give you an idea that they've identified a problem in the permit, but it does represent a real issue and that there were six separate incidents caused that caused at least, at least one reporting of low pressure or no water from a single or more than one resident since January first of this year. We all know on January fourth, Laflamme's furniture burned. That was a big fire that required a lot of water. That was in the low pressure, that was in the zone that we are concerned about. And we, that probably affected the largest area in town, which included Crescent Boulevard, Margaret Lane, Jefferson Heights, Stonehenge Drive, Cresswood Drive, and Monument Circle. Each one of those locations received at least, and more likely in this case, multiple phone calls from residents either indicating that they had no water, that they had very low water pressure, that they had dirty water. A lot of times what happens is when you have something like that in the low end of town and that's one of the lower sections of town, all the water in the system drains to that area and the highest elevations lose pressure. Those are all on what's called dead-end lines. So there's portions of the lines that are partially stagnant. Suddenly that, suddenly that stagnation releases and gets into people's lines when the water pressure comes back up into those areas. And then the next five incidents were all what we would call maximum flow incidents. Willow Park, which is, there's a pump station in Willow Park that pumps water up to East Road that draws off the main portion of the water supply system. That caused, similarly caused at least one phone call in Stonehenge, sorry, Monument Circle and Pine Circle. And then similarly, on four fourteen, the same incident occurred. There was a phone call from Margaret Lane. And then five fourteen, or, yes, my apologies, I have an extra one in here. Five, no, four fifteen, the Willow Park pump run again. And then five fourteen and five fifteen, the townwide, the town is obligated to do hydrant flushing, which is, there again, that's a maintenance activity. That's essentially a maximum flow condition. They're required to go out and flush lines to make sure that all the water that's in the line is fresh and to deal with the dead-end lines that are located on the system. So both on five fourteen and five fifteen, that hydrant flushing that occurred caused at least one phone call in these areas. So it does actually affect certain citizens. From the regulatory side, the permit language that I identified in the earlier slide, it lower in the permit requires that this be corrected prior to two thousand eighteen in accordance with the temporary operating permit from the town. And so the specific language on that is on or before December first, two thousand eighteen. The permitee shall make all improvements to the south end of the water distribution system within the low pressure zone in accordance with the Town of Bennington's capital improvement plan updated February twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, and raise minimum water distribution system pressure to thirty-five greater under all conditions of flow, which includes fire flow. So, so the consequences of this, other than the continued, the continued issues that certain residents may, may, may experience, is that the state regularly imposes financial penalties on water distribution systems that are not dealing with their own deficiencies. That's not to say that the state has said this is what will happen. What we asked the state was to tell us what would hap, what would, what is a possible consequence and has this been, has this happened to other water systems in the past? And it is a regular occurrence that if, if water systems don't comply with proposed capital improvement plans that identify corrections to deficiencies, that financial penalties can be levied. And secondly, and I think this is a more, this may be just as bad, is the prevention of future connections or expansions within the system. So when, when a deficiency is not addressed, the state can come and say, you can't connect to our system. You cannot make any expansions or connections to the system. And what that, that essentially means that any, that the water resource department can't issue allocations. And those allocations can be for businesses or industries or homeowners. So the, if, if a cafe downtown wants to add seats, they need to seek an allocation as a part of their process. And that would be not allowed during, if, if the state were to impose that penalty on the townwide water system. And similarly, if an individual wants to make an addition on their house to add a bedroom that's on the water system, they wouldn't be able to do that either. So going to the question of location and why the location was selected, the, the, the system that you can see in blue here, which is what the proposed zone, new zone will be that will isolate the problem areas from the much lower elevation area in town, requires some facility of standing, of water, where basically we're adding pressure via gravity by the construction of a tank at an elevation. And what we need that elevation to be is a maximum of eleven hundred and forty feet or a minimum of eleven hundred and forty feet. So what I'm showing here on the slide is the areas that are in closest proximity to both the problem areas and water municipal infrastructure, as well as physical road infrastructure. This is the nearest. And you can see that while there are other opportunities, the only place that has a physical access point to this area, which can be as possibly as a distribution line, is the Southern Ramon College campus. So, and what we selected to do when we did, when we looked at feasibility was to place that tank in a location that was just above eleven hundred and forty feet and was shielded from view from the campus so we would not necessarily disrupt the views of anybody since this is a prominent location in town. Similarly, we decided that the pump station optimally would be placed essentially at the entrance to the soccer, to the playing fields that Southern Ramon College has on the lower campus. There again, this is right off of municipal water infrastructure. It's directly located off of town highway system and would require virtually no site preparation because we would essentially be constructing a building off of an already existing parking lot. So our goal was to optimize both of these locations once, once this area was selected. And that's why these are placed where they are. From there, we needed to create a distribution line. Well, after that was selected, we began to also identify secondary opportunities that would go beyond what would, what would be the minimum necessary, which is to correct the portions of the highest parts of town, with very little or no financial repercussions in terms of the construction. And what, what we identified is these, this area contains about half of the town hydrants that are on lines that are less than six inches and also produce flows less than five hundred gallons per minute. And that the majority of this area affected would either be placed on lines that would have greater than eight inch line capacity or the change in pressure would allow that hydrant to likely flow greater than five hundred gallons per minute. And since most of these, this is a mix of, obviously, we've got a large institution, the hospital, and then we've got the businesses on Dewey Street, but mainly this is residential area. So this is going to help increase firefighting capacity throughout this whole section of town. Secondly, the, this particular location, because of the way that the distribution lines are placed, this Monument Avenue extension has a twelve inch line that comes through, essentially through Old Bennington. And we have a lot of aging wooden structures in Old Bennington that if there were a fire would require a substantial amount of flow in order to fight those fires. What we've done in the design is provide, essentially provide what's called a pressure sustaining valve or essentially a way that this whole system can backflow so that if there's a draw on the system which creates a low pressure point on the backside of where this pump station is, the tank will now open, would now open up and backflow through the system in order to maintain water pressure. So we, we essentially have added a, a point of redundancy for that. And that was essentially just the placement, essentially piping configuration inside of the pump station. And then finally, we see that we would place the hospital on this system and it would act the same. We would have the hospital to have a very stable flow to its campus. So those were, those were essentially the secondary opportunities that we saw once we selected this point. So the initial proposal and design was this configuration, which was, as again, there again, we have a pump station right off of the parking lot to the playing fields and the tank being placed just, just to the west of the mansion on Mansion Drive, shielded by a large stand of evergreens. And we proposed to bring this line down Mansion Drive, a short section across the field and then down the access road. This provided a, what we consider to be an efficient means of access. It provided the most linear footage of distribution line having direct access off of a maintained road. And that's, so, and that's how we ended up coming to this original plan. When the bond vote failed, we were asked to look for cost savings. And so what we did was reexamine whether these points were in their optimal location. And very shortly, very quickly, we determined that they were. So the only place that we could find true cost savings in the proposed plan would be to find a more, a shorter distance between the, between the tank and the pump station or both of those facilities. So we actually drew a straight line between these facilities and asked what is the smallest deviation from that line that's most feasibly constructible? And we, the straight line goes through the pond at Southern Ramon College, which is not feasible. Going behind and down the old access road to the college was similarly not as feasible because it was, there was not much cost savings, there were more unknowns. So the straightest shot was to go through, essentially through the campus, as it were. So this provided us with a ten percent cost savings, so it was the least possible alternative. If you can see from the plan, we have far less. If you can see from the plan, we have far less direct access, so there's more areas where this, these distribution lines are inaccessible during portions of the year. And we have more infrastructure that we have to be very near in proximity to SBC's existing infrastructure. So there was the benefit of the cost savings. There's, there's also, there was the drawback of a few of the physical issues with the direction. But ultimately, the cost savings is, the, the select board and the town determined that it was, that the negatives were less costly than the savings for the least cost alternative. So that's why we ended up going from 3.2 to 2.9 million dollars in total cost. And you can see across the map, everybody's seeing approximately a 10% savings. So the town portion of the project, which is the town portion which the town would be solely funding, would be approximately 2, 2 to 2.1 million dollars. So that was a savings of 22, 228,000. There's a, there's the other town portion shared with SBC. And looking at the map, this is the purple line on the map. The blue line is the town portion, and the red line is the, the SBC portion, portion that they will be paying for solely. The purple line is the, just to clarify, that line is town-owned infrastructure that Southern Vermont College has agreed to cost share 50% of the construction costs with right now. And if this, this, this is a part of the overall infrastructure that will solve the original primary issue, which is inadequate flow to the, to hot, low pressure, pressure areas in fact. So overall, because of the savings, there's, there's two factors where the savings are, where there are savings. One is the reduction in bond costs, which is they're going from a 3.5% bond to a 3% bond, and then the, and including the cost sharing from Southern Vermont College. So at the end of 20 years of bond, the ta- the ratepayers will save approximately 730,000, And that's, so just to recap, the annual bond cost, right now, with the proposed cost sharing at a 3% bond, subsidized bond rate from Drinking Water State or All-In Loan Fund, the cost would be 174,600. And if the town were to go alone and not use, not use the opportunity provided by partnership with SBC and Drinking Water State or All-In Loan Fund, we'd be paying a, have a bond interest rate of 3.5%, and would also not have the cost sharing of the section that's going to be shared with SBC. So that would be 211,000. And just a reiteration of the same numbers. So just to finally recap before we go in, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just add one point here? It's, it's important to note that those figures do not take into account the increased cost of the project, should we have to put it off until 2018. We use the same project cost in making these calculations. If in fact, we're going it alone, we're more than likely at 2018, three years out, four years out, we're likely to see increases in project costs that would make those savings, if we go now, even greater.
So just to, to sort of recap, timeline of the project, from what I, from what I heard, there was the question of why is the town of Bennington ratepayers solving Southern Vermont College's problem? And I think it's important to note that this was a problem that was originated as a deficiency identified in the town system. And that the, while the problem does not have to be solved by the town now, it has to be solved by the end of 2018. And that while Southern Vermont College's problem has to be solved now, which is why they are willing to cost share what will ultimately be a town-owned asset, that the, that this sort of story became, began much earlier. And that 2007 actually was when the state identified this deficiency in the town system and obligated them to begin seeking a timeline and developing a capital improvement plan to solve this deficiency. And that meant that in 2008 and 2009, the town began and completed a feasibility study to look for the most cost-effective solution to solving these problems. And then when that feasibility study was complete, which identified Southern Vermont College campus as the most feasible location to place this system, the preliminary, the system improvements were preliminarily designed. This, this project, this part of this project is, this isn't the whole project, it is the biggest part of this project. What the town has done for the last five to six years, or, or longer, is to fund their maintenance, large-scale maintenance and capital improvement projects on a year-to-year basis. So they will identify as much as they're able to fit in the operating budget, and that's what they spend every year. This piece can't be done in pieces, in any much smaller pieces than what you see, because the tank itself is, you know, 1.6 million dollar cost, and with cyber included. So the, that's not something that the town can bite off as a single cap, as a single capital improvement on a year-to-year basis, without drastically increasing water rates for that year. The rest of this project can very likely be chipped away at the same way that the town has been addressing its other areas of concern, like North Side Drive and County Street in the past. So, so anyway, the, at the end of 2010, the project was shelved because, because of really a lack of funding, for better sense, for better phrasing. And then at the end of 2012, Southern Vermont College approached the town to discuss the feasibility of connecting to municipal water, the municipal water system, because they had an immediate issue. And that, that ultimately launched into the town seeing the opportunity to partner with SBC and get favorable Drinking Water State or All-In Loan Fund bond rate and terms. And they ultimately came to an agreement on the cost sharing and how that system would be constructed and paid for, which then ultimately ended up in an interlocal agreement that the town staff and SBC reached as far as to share the cost of the system. So with that, I would allow, hand it off to someone to present the proposed by.
I'll do that.
Stu, go ahead.
Have you got that? Thank you. This may be difficult for folks to see, but basically what we asked our finance director to do, working with Terrence, is to make projections, because that's one of the complaints we heard the last time, that we weren't able to tell us what it was going to be like going forward. What you see here is a projection to FY19. So we're projecting out the next four fiscal years. We have accounted for depreciation that is brought into the system with each new capital improvement. And so we're talking about adding the improvements on North Side Drive, some smaller improvements at the filtration plant, and then the, that water pressure line. Those are the, the projects that you see in the very beginning. All of those are theoretically added by FY16, and then those costs begin to impact the budget, impact depreciation. We find, and it comes down to what we showed you earlier, that the depreciation budget will essentially reach its peak in FY17, most likely nearing the completion of the Southland Water Project, and then begins to decline once again. And what that has the impact of doing is it allows us to begin to build reserves within, back into the budget. And we project that all of this cost will be done with an increase in the budget, and rates will be determined by how much flow is there, but they tend to follow pretty closely. We look at increases in the budget of no more than 3% per year. And those can be mitigated by the use of reserves, or if you look at the bottom line below the yellow line, you will see that in FY19, we are projecting a reserve of 204,000. If the board wanted to keep the rates, or rate increase, or budget increase lower, it could reduce that reserve at that time. So we're not going to be seeing 11 to 12 to 15% increases in the, in the system any longer, or at least for the next five years out. We have met our depreciation requirements under, for auditing purposes, and now it's a matter of maintaining. And I think that these kinds of projections indicate that we will be successful. If you stay for the meeting tonight, you will hear that the rate increases for FY15 will be zero. Will be no increase in water or sewer rates for the coming year, and we think that's going to be more than likely the trend. We'll get back to traveling with the cost of living and not having to see excessive increases in order to capture a deficiency in the way we financed our water system.
Stu?
Do you want to go to the next slide?
Sure.
This is, whoops. That's the...
Yeah, that, that's, that's difficult. The, this last slide that he just flashed up there, actually appeared as a, a column in the banner. We received approximately seven or eight questions that had been asked, and it was sent on to the select board with an eye to getting some answers to those questions. And I attempted to answer them. They had to do with the mandate, which we've already talked about. They had to do with why the options were chosen, why the college location, and why does that benefit the town? And that's where the savings, we project the savings to come in, because the college will share in the construction cost and obviously share in the bond cost. There's a question about whether or not this was going to create an expansion of the system, and whether or not sewer lines were going to have to be extended to keep up with that demand. And the answer is basically, this is not an expansion project. Yes, we're picking up a new customer at Southern Vermont College, but the lands that are to the east of Monument Avenue are principally set aside, reserved for non-development, and they're mostly owned by the Hospital Corporation. There are very, very few customers who will be able to connect to this system because of the way the lines are configured and the way they will be upgraded in order to get the water to the, to the necessary neighborhoods. And all of the folks who are impacted are already on the system. So this is not an expansion. This is an improvement project. Question about the way we vote and the way we allocate these fees. And that is, that's a much more difficult question, and it's one that doesn't have an immediate answer. It has to do with the fact that the water system ratepayers pay the entire cost, except what SBC will pay. Yet everybody in the community, North Bennington and Bennington residents, all get to vote on the bond. And that goes to, when a community bonds for a, a project of this size, it's collateral, it's the properties within its, its boundaries. North Bennington, Old Bennington, and Bennington. If the water fund should fail to meet its obligations, then the town would have to look to those properties and to, they become the collateral. Years ago, there was a set discount for water and sewer system, non-users or non-connectors on their tax rate, because the general fund was paying all of the bond costs for municipal projects. We changed that in the early 80s, because the discount began to mean a tremendous discounted rate to those not on the system, far in excess of what it was when it was originally devised, because it was a set number. And every time we reappraised and the tax rate came down, that portion of the discount actually increased in value. It's not, it's the ideal system. If we were to be in a position now where this was an expansion project, or this was the creation of a new water or sewer system that would benefit the entire community, we could then spread some of those costs, I think fairly, over all of the customers that are the Bennington residents and Bennington.
Property holders. That is not the case here, and I think it's a very difficult argument to make, that we should do that. Question about North Bennington, I've answered. The residents of North Bennington, their property is included in the collateral. What other funding has been sought? And unfortunately, there are no longer any grant funds available for water system improvements. Every, every opportunity is a loan, whether it's the Rural Development Group Loan Program, which is federal dollars through the Agricultural Department, or whether it's through the Drinking Water Fund of the State of Vermont. Those are the only funds that are available. They are low-interest loans, and so we think we are maximizing our potential there. And this will bring a new customer who will pay approximately $14,000 annually into the water system to help us defray that cost. And can reserves, are there reserves and can reserves be used? And that was the last question. Currently, we have in reserve for system improvements, $105,000, that has been growing over the years, and capital reserves, which is what we create with our allocation fees of 107,000. The board, at its discretion, can access those funds to help mitigate the cost of the bond in the future, should it decide to do so. And as we showed you earlier on, we are hoping to continue to build those reserves going forward, so that we will ultimately find ourselves with much greater monies in reserve, with a fair and equitable amount of depreciation, and a system that is essentially meets the auditing standards, as well as meets the business standards that we are held to. And that's a brief summary of those very small questions.
I have a question.
Jim, you have a question?
I do. First, a statement and just, in my day-to-day routine at the, my card, after the bond vote failed, I would say about a dozen customers over time came to me and said that they, you know, they thought that SBC was somehow benefiting, benefiting in a really sort of a, it was characterized as, you know, sort of a shady way. And I had to point out to them that without SBC's help, the increase to the cost of this, both in interest, it would go from approximately 3% to what, Stu?
Well, the current bond rate is 3.5%.
Without SBC's participation?
Yeah, the current bond rate, we would be, if, we would be going to the bond bank, because we don't have enough points to make us eligible for the state's Drinking Water Fund at this point. So we would be looking to the bond bank for those monies. It's a half a percent higher. And of course, the cost would be 528,000 more.
Over the life of the bond?
No, that's the construction.
Okay, all right. All right. So SBC was, would be throwing in 500,000 in cash, right, to participate?
Well, actually, the way it's being structured, the bond, the $3 million bond pays for the entire project. SBC will be reimbursing the town on an annual basis approximately 36,000 for... approximately $36,400 annually as its share of their project cost. The capital cost that the college will incur is the cost to run those red lines, the connection lines to the various facilities. Those taxpayers or the rate payers will not be paying those costs. That is fully on their dollar. And you can see the red lines that come off of the blue line up above at the mansion itself, and then it feeds the, I guess that's the dormitory and the new dormitories, and then there's the long line to the gymnasium. All of those costs, and I can't tell you what they are because that's their issue, are being borne by the college, in addition to the $520,000.
Second question. Without SVC's participation, what would the additional cost be over the life of the bond?
That would, using, using the same project cost, the savings over the life of the bond would be about $728,000, three-quarters of a million dollars.
I think, yeah, that'll do it for now.
Anybody have any questions for Terry or Jason? Terry, you have anything you wanted to add to that, or?
Jason did a pretty well.
Okay.
Did a good job here.
All right, I'll open it up to public comment. People want, we have the microphone out here. If anyone wants to ask a question or address the Board or these gentlemen, stand right up to the microphone, if you would. You can line up behind whatever is easiest, and please state your name and where you live. It's not through a PA, it's just going, that's just for Cat TV, so we're hearing you, straight from you.
Well, you will hear me, my voice is loud.
That's good, that's good.
I don't need that. My name is Bill Hartz. I live in Bennington, I live in the infected area. One of the problems I see with presenting this to the community is credibility of the water department. Now, that's a harsh statement, but let me explain that, and maybe if I read this, because I made some notes. But basically, I will summarize it. When you send out or publish your reports, 60% of your data is ancient. It's not current. And when you look at your reports, your data shows that there are, and I have some of them here, but I want to quote it exactly so I don't get confused. Oh, come on, puppy. It's saying that there are no violations. Let me tell you something. I've been in quality control for about 28, 30 years. It's been my life. In that field, you're from Missouri. You show me, you don't tell me. You need proof. If you're going to say something meets the standard, you've got to show it, or you can't make that statement. When people read this, they laugh. They realize that you're just pumping out historical data. You haven't validated it. And this really came to mind to me when after Hurricane Irene, we had problems with our pumping station and the water coming in, and the data was the same. Nobody checked it after all the problems we had. That is a credibility issue with the water department and the public, and I think that should be looked at. If you could prove that, you would have a better idea and better chance of pursuing this with the community because you abstain, you raised your bar of integrity.
You talking about pressure data specifically?
Pressure breaks. We were threatening to have the boil water. That means there was a concern with the quality of the water. The whole system was questionable. So, once you got it back online, why weren't the principles that you checked for validated? You just took last year's data and put it, published it in the report.
I'd like to--
I'll just let Terry respond to that.
All that information is validated on reports each month through the State of Vermont Water Supply. That document that we send you is a brief overview called a Consumer Confidence Report required by EPA. If there is information there that you question or need answers to, you just need to simply call me at the office, simply. There's not enough room, and I couldn't, couldn't put enough information in writing for every user and try to send it out. As a matter of fact, most users, and we've gone to paperless by putting this report on our town website, most users felt that it was a waste of time. So, as far as credibility, I think you need to understand is that I have all that documentation, and it's open in the public anytime you'd like to look at it. But I cannot publish it and send it to every individual because the incredible cost, the time it would take. But believe me, the State of Vermont Water Supply Division looks over every piece of data that I send on a monthly basis to them, showing that we've met the criteria. As far as a violation, we are not in violation until we get to 2018 on this water pressure problem. They've given us a timeframe to work out. Is it a problem? Is it something we need to address? Yes, it is. But I really take issue with your credibility statement in the way that all that information is well documented, and if there's ever a time any individual in this community needs or wants information, all they need to do is call the town office. If there's a specific piece of data or a timeframe, I'm happy to make copies and email and send them to you.
With all due respect, sir, if you're going to publish a report, why do you say that the latest sample date was 2007 in the 2011 report, and you say there's no valid, you say there's no issues? You have--
Because the EPA only requires that you test for those elements on a timeframe basis. If you're consistently under, the timeframe is longer. We've been doing this testing for probably 25 years. So, if you don't have a hit on a particular item in the first five years, they go to seven, 10, or more. Anything that's on there is the most recent, the most recent test for that particular item. You look at some are done every year, some are done twice a year, some are done quarterly.
Okay, then if you've done the test recently and you've got current data, why don't you just publish it?
It's there. Anything that's current is there.
Okay. I guess we're at a discourse here.
I'm happy to spend a few minutes with you afterwards and explain that to you, but the data that is required--
I think, I think the key point here is that the data from 2007 was the last time we did that test or were required to do that test and supply that information.
Okay, I accept that. But this is a report, this one here is 2011. 2011 tells me that the last time it was tested was '07, which means to me, in '07, the way the report reads, the implication that you get when you look at this is that the last time it was validated was seven years ago? Four years ago, sorry, let me do my math. At, four years ago was okay, but after Irene, after we had a near catastrophe with our system, where's your validation that we're okay now? That's my one issue. The other issue is, and I'm curious about it, you had an issue with methyl ethyl ketone--
Yes.
--found in the water.
Yes.
In my experience, methyl ethyl ketone is basically used as a degreaser in industry. It's a good solvent. It's a carcinogen. It's in the water, and you haven't validated the source. It's just, it goes source unknown. It's left blank. Just FYI.
We were asked to re-sample for that after that, and if you look at the report, it said that the reporting of that sample has to be the highest level within the timeframe that the sample has to be tested for. We tested for methyl ethyl ketone as soon as we got those results back, and it was virtually zero. Where, how that got into that one particular sample, we don't know, but that was a source sample at Bowles Rock. And whatever was there at that time of the initial sampling had moved down the river, and we never picked it up again. But if you look at the directions in the table there, it says the highest level recorded within that timeframe. I believe that's at least a five-year timeframe. So if you look at a more recent report, you might see that that will be either a zero or a very, very, very small number, smaller than able to be detected.
We should talk, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Reynolds? Sure.
My name is Robert Reynolds. I'm a taxpayer. I pay my bills all up to date. Tonight, though, talking with other groups that I talk on this here, a question was asked. Other words, we, the people, we made a vote. The vote come up no. Now, we're wondering, here's what's been, we want to know who, by name, on the Select Board made the motion for a second water bond revote. Who on the Select Board made this motion?
I don't have the minutes on that, but we can find that.
But we voted for it.
Yeah, we voted for it. I don't know, I mean--
Frankly, who made it does not--
It was certainly a majority vote to pick another, well, the proposal you saw was presented as one of several, and the Select Board did vote to take that and present that to the people and give them an opportunity to vote on that.
I'm not sure, but I'm not sure, it may have--
On the Select Board, I made, no, I had these things for many years--
Okay.
--in the service. I paid for it with my hearing.
Okay, I'm, what I wanted to say is, I think it may have been me that made the motion. I'm not sure, from my memory--
And who seconded this motion?
I don't know.
We'd have to get the minutes out, but we can get that for you if you'd like.
It would have to be second.
Sure.
And then, another, you're saying there was no motion?
There was a motion. I believe it was unanimous vote, was it not? Yeah.
I don't recall who made the motion. It's one time. We'd have to go back into our minutes.
It was unanimous, I believe it was unanimous vote to present the bond back to the people.
Well, then, actually, for this, getting back at a second vote is what the people, different ones that I associate with, are asking. Now, they got to go back to the polls and vote again.
Yep.
These people are not against Southern Vermont College water or on this other end. We, they feel that there's other, more cost-efficient ways to do this. Now, here's, they have the wells up to Southern Vermont College. The well that's feeding the main building, I was associated with that. That well, when it was put in, after it was chlorinated, they wanted to see if they could pump it down. It went down to a certain level. They couldn't pump it down, they pumped for over a week. Then we capped it, finished wiring it, and that's where it's been. Now, we, they have the new wells that they have put in. Looking at a cost-efficient way, there's other ways that they can. They have these companies that set up purification units. That would be a lot more economical than that big 750,000 gallon tank on the, up there. Talking about 750 gallon tank, that water has to be treated. At our treatment plant, how many gallons per hour, let's go by hours, can be pumped from there from what that unit is built for?
We, we use about 1.8 million gallons of water a day at the present time. I couldn't break that down in an hour for you.
All right, now we're also looking at another thing, expense after this event.
Before you move on, Bob, the, the tank that's being placed up there has to be put there for our needs, not Southern Vermont College. Southern Vermont College is going to die out of that line and get water on a daily basis, but the reason the tank is there and the size it is, is to supply the people that are already on our municipal system. So that we can't do away with the tank, even if Southern Vermont College was to say tomorrow, we're going to go on our own, we're not going to do this, that tank and that pump station and the main line through the tank has to be installed in order for us to deal with the pressure problem that we have on itself in the town.
I think also--
Well, this is the thing. There's a lot of other things that we're looking at. On the, we have to have a pump for that. All right, with a pump, you're going to have to, if that pump goes out, we got to have a spare standing by.
We do.
We got to put extra people on the payroll.
No. This isn't going to require any extra people.
Maybe we're going to, with what we got, that'd be good.
Yes, we are.
All right, now, when I was at a meeting previously--
The other item that you mentioned was that you asked the question, how many gallons are pumped from the treatment plant? And I'm trying, if I can read between the lines, you're asking how, why can't that facility serve these upper areas?
Red and all that amount of water for Southern Vermont College to our system to other, for purification.
So, the issue is not, one, the primary issue of, that this project is solving is not Southern Vermont College's problem, one. Secondly, so the primary issue is inadequate water pressure under maximum fire flow conditions. What that means is that those areas in red that are on the map over there, when there's a fire, or when the town has a very large demand, not standard demand. If static demand, everybody's using their water just like every other day, those, those, there's pressure there that's approximately 35 to 38 pounds, or 40 pounds. But the moment that you get a large demand on the system that's somewhere over 500 gallons per minute, that water pressure drops in those upper areas. That, and what that means is that the facility on the treatment plant in Woodford cannot, is not able to provide the static water pressure to those, to those areas of town, which means that we have to, just like we have other, just like we have other tanks in the area, the area in purple, which is served by the Burgess Road Tank, that's a tank that's there to serve those properties because they're in an elevation that the facility, that the treatment plant can't serve by static water pressure. And this whole upper area is served essentially by East Road. But because of the way that the network works, and the age of the pipe, and the size of the lines, and all, and all of that sort of interconnectedness, when there's a large demand in the system in the lower part of town, lower in elevation, these areas don't get water. So what we have to do is create another location, another pressure zone, with basically standing water at a higher elevation. We're not boost, putting a booster pump into the system. We're not artificially pressurizing water, the system itself, to, to meet those static water demands. We're essentially pushing water up at night, and we're putting it in a tank, and then that water essentially provides the static water pressure to those facilities.
Now, these low-pressure areas, all right? They didn't come on us all of a sudden. The pipes that were poured in originally for these areas, Crescent, Port Crescent Manor and all that is. When I was a kid, up there, I used, me and Jimmy Wahlberg, we used to mow the lawn. We watered the garden up there. Water pressure, to water that garden, you had to turn the valve down. When we were mowing, one of us, whether it was watering, would turn the water up, and get the other guy, it was a lot of pressure. Now, those pipes, they, had they been increased in size, the amount of buildings up there, a lot of new homes and all this. There's other angles that should be looked at before we go into this heavy amount, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Reynolds?
Now, here's something else. In one of the papers-- meeting that I was at-- In one of the papers, meeting that I was at, Morgan Springs was brought up. Stewart said it was Mount Anthony. Tests before then, when the dirty water on Hewlett Brook or on Willow Brook, I had The first gallon, one of our representatives took it up north. It disappeared. We know what happened. But anyways, the water there, Dr. Lewis brought in a company that did testing of water. They sent two people up. At the time they came, I had, I was a scout master. I had scouts. And scouts was up there working on merit badges. They got to questioning these guys on the water. Well, it ended up, they didn't follow them around. Well, needless to say, the pressure in my well was great enough, was keeping Willow Brook out. But in the process, they wanted to know where the source was. One of the guys there had been a scout. He took it down himself to help these guys with the merit badge. Two different Saturdays, they worked with the scouts. They did the North Bennington Reservoir, Bowles Brook, where some of our water comes from, and then they did the White Rocks, the Dunville, Everett Pond, the Little Brook that's to the east of Mount Anthony. Well, anyways.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
There was three, there was three that tested the same. My well, the White Rocks and Morgan Springs. Now, getting back to Morgan Springs.
Mr. Reynolds?
Stewart told me that there had been a test made.
Yeah. There's a bunch of people I think who want to talk. Can you tell me where this is going for the bond?
Are we running Rules of Order by Robert? Rules of Order?
Not necessarily. I just want to make sure people get a chance to speak, and I'm not sure where this is going with the bond, so I just ask you to.
If you go by Robert Rules of Order, I should be able to complete what I got here.
I would like you to. Thank you.
All right. Okay. The next in line was North Bennington Reservoir, Bowles Brook, and they were all fed from the same mountain of the White Rocks. Now, once again, I say Morgan Springs is fed from the White Rocks. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
I want to make one point, if I may. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Sir, please state your name.
Ed Letourneau from Bennington. I have a couple of questions. I understand the permit language. It actually comes from the insurance services organization. It's sort of like the National Fire Protection Association. Every five or 10 years, they write a whole set of new books, so they make money by selling them to people. And the state of Vermont naturally adopts this language. And I can comprehend all that. What I want to know is, when you tell me that the evidence you have for low pressure is people calling up, that's sort of like saying, well, do you love me as much today as you did yesterday? Do we have any empirical data, like were pressure gauges put on the system? Were they tested to actually know what the pressure is in these locations?
We've actually gone to these locations and tapped the hydrant and got nothing but air out of them for 10 or 15 minutes at a time. We do have, in our drainage system on our pump station, we do have pressure recorders that are printed right on a computer, so you can see when that pressure drops and below what is a minimum level. Yes, we do.
And Mr. Letourneau, while we're on the subject, this addresses something. I have personal experience about the lack of pressure. My parents lived on Barber Street, and I took care of them in their final years. And I remember there was a water emergency, and there was no water out of the tap. And I heard my old man say, did you, wait up, please. He said, did you pay the water in sewer? He bellowed it from the other room. And I thought, you know, what had happened? And what had happened was that there was a low-pressure event. So I know, not a drop came out. And here's the important thing to remember. In an event like that, let's say somebody's house catches fire, and there's no pressure, they go to a hydrant. While there's another fire happening in another part of town, you're putting both property and people at risk without this improvement. Thank you.
Yeah. So I understand what you're saying. I know people at the top of Crescent Boulevard that have said they've never had a low-pressure problem and have lived there for 50 years. So, you know, that's anecdotal evidence, and it's not validated. We had another gentleman talking about quality. I'm talking essentially about quality, too. I don't know that we have actual low-pressure readings anywhere. You've never presented that data to the town. Obviously, you're taking pressures at a lower elevation, and somebody's making calculations and saying, we don't have pressure up above.
We have pressure recorders. It's an electronic recorder that, when it does, it reads and stores that data that we now load to a computer. We can put it on any residential tap or any fire hydrant, anywhere in town. And when we know there's going to be a large draw or a problem, potential problem, like the weak flush hydrant, we put those units right on the fire hydrant. Totally unobstructed, not interferes with your resident, somebody taking a shower, somebody doing the laundry, right on the main line. Then we can come back and download that data and show you where that pressure dropped to. And on any number of occasions, I can, if you'd like to, I can go out and do a field test and show you what that data shows.
Okay. I'd like to see that data.
I mean, it's done routinely.
Okay. I'd like to see that data sometimes. I also, I don't know.
I'm happy to.
Is the software being used, been validated? Have the instruments been calibrated?
So there's a current water system model that's been, that was calibrated in 2011 when we did a hydrant. Basically, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of hydrants that are on small lines and have low capacity for fire flow. We, there were two ways that we can validate essentially or identify the hydrants that meet demand, which is the minimum 500 gallons per minute or greater. One of the ways is to go and flow every single hydrant that's on a line that's less than eight inches in diameter, or to use a calibrated system, which is what the town of Bennington and we did, which was we have an entirely, we have a simulated system of the town of Bennington where we can run simulations. And we calibrated that in 2011 as a part of the hydrant analysis. We also use that same system with the calibrated data to identify and design the system that would, that will ultimately solve this problem. So yes, there's, we, what we're doing, we don't have routine, there are other levels of low pressure. There's routine, routinely operating below a certain threshold, which the town of Bennington doesn't. Static water pressure in those areas does not routinely, on a daily basis, see less than 20 PSI at the ground floor level, which is what the APA requires, requires the town and other municipal water supplies to supply. But what we can see, and what we see from anecdotal evidence, and it's support, which essentially supports what the simulation is telling us, is that when there's a fire flow in that yellow and blue area that's greater than 500 gallons per minute, those areas will see a drop in pressure below 20 PSI.
Okay. One more short question. Since we're talking about the pressure draw in the lower area affecting the upper area, why can't we solve that by putting in dry hydrants? There's an awful lot of communities that have them in a lot of locations, and it seems to me it would probably solve this problem.
And when you have a dry hydrant, you have to have a water source. There aren't many ponds and rivers up on Stonehead Drive and the areas where we need them. So, you know, when you go down in town, if you're going to draw in town, you have environmental issues with the installation, you have freeze-up problems. We just put a dry hydrant in Woodford when they don't have water pressure up near Bowles Brook. So we can do that in certain areas, but again, you have to be able to pump that water. And our problem areas are areas that we don't have alternate access to water.
And also, to that point, from the original slide, maximum flow includes fire flow, but it also included in this case, in the case that we just sort of took a snippet of, it included several other events that were, that were maximum flow events, when the Willow Park pump station came on and ran for a long time, and then when they do their hydrant flushing. And, you know, we see, in addition to that, the state mandates that if your town water supply provides fire protection, then you are placing, when you do new lines, you're placing fire hydrants every 300 to 600 lineal feet in that line to provide adequate fire protection throughout the system.
Ma'am? Come on.
I'm Sue Katz, and I live on Pine Circle. And I've had a number of residents, neighborhood residents, that have been without water in the last several years. So I know it does happen in our area. My question is, the bond issue was turned down at the last vote. It may be turned down this next vote. What's the next step? The next step? The next step?
Well, that's a question.
It'll cost you more money.
Yeah. I mean, we could wait until 2018 when the mandate is enforced. You know, if this board or another board decides to come up with a different suggestion and put that in front of voters, that could happen. You know, that's.
Yeah. I think, I mean, it's a political, in this case, it's a political decision. If this bond vote is turned down, then it's going to be up to this board to determine whether or not we attempt to come back sooner rather than wait to the 2018 deadline. I mean, I sense from listening to Bob Reynolds that there are some people that are getting a little frustrated because there are other votes that are being put forward. I don't think this is the kind of an issue, and I don't think you're going to see a dramatic change in the plans that will make this any different next March or the March thereafter. So I think, I think it's critical from our perspective that we have a successful bond vote this time in order that we benefit from the cost savings that are offered to us. If we wait, they will not be available, and the project will cost more, and we will have to do it. This is not a question of whether we choose to or not. We will have to do it.
This gentleman here will start with. That's okay.
I'm not very good at public speaking.
Just state your name, please, for everyone, please.
My name's Lawrence Roberts.
Thank you.
I live over on Bowen Road. And I've lived here in Bennington roughly 40 years. Those 40 years were spent up on that campus. I've worked that land, I've farmed it. I work for the college's maintenance. And if you folks are planning to put a water line up through there, you better bring a lot of dynamite. Because when you get up to the upper dorm, solid rock all the way up. And then you also are going to have to deal with all the buried power, fiber optic cables, tons of stuff that are buried there. And down where you want to put your pump stations, there's a couple of areas there that shouldn't be disturbed. You folks might have remembered 20, 25, 30 years ago, we had a fire bug around here in the Everets Cattle Farm and the Apple Barn, all burned, along with part of Fairdale Farms. Well, the Apple Barn site was just what it was. It was an apple barn, with a lot of old orchard equipment and stuff kept in there. It's all been bodozed in. It's air. Leave it alone. Up where you were talking about your pump station, there is a certain zone height that nothing can be built. And that's supposedly on the level with the college mansion. So you might want to consider that. And as far as getting your height, I didn't see anything mentioned about, like, over the Everett Cave area, which would be a more straight line up from Monument Ave with less obstacles in the way. And you go digging in there, there's a good chance you're going to hit one hell of a source of water. Now, when the Everets lived there, I've got to kind of lean on this.
You can sit if you want. That mic should pick you up if you want to sit down.
When the Everets lived up there, they had water problems. They ran a line from the mansion down to where the present new dormitory is now, and then from there, the line continued on down across where the athletic field is to a little unknown site called Indian Springs. There is a pump house there. Remains of the old pump and stuff are there. The Everets pumped water from there across our athletic field area up to the old ice house, and then it was pushed on up the mountain to a large holding tank. And then it gravity-fed down to the main building. Trouble is, they had a terrible time getting the water up there. It didn't work. They had a, like, a 5,000, 6,000-gallon big stone tank, and they kept running out of water. And the well that Mr. Reynolds mentions at the college, it's an adequate well for the main building because you don't have that big of a flow of people on it. The ones at the dormitories are very good wells. So, you know, if the college chose, they don't need your system. And the other thing is, you go putting all this stuff, you get it up there. What happens if the college closes? You don't think it can't happen? I can remember going without a paycheck when the college was in financial trouble before. And my wife and I purchased our home on Bowen Road. Well, since we've lived there, I've lost two neighbors either side of me because they can't pay their damn water bill and taxes. Their houses, their property were foreclosed. And, I mean, look around this town. Look at all the damn for sale signs. Doesn't that tell you something? Look at the age group of people. Do you see anybody here, a 20-year-old? Where are they going? They ain't staying here. They're driving them out. They can't make a living here. I could go on all night, but the taxpayers have had enough. You're killing us. Do the job that we put you in here for, please. And you don't work for him. He works for you. Thank you.
Do you have some response on that? Some, next, come on up.
I would appreciate, I'd appreciate if there'd be a response to this president presenter relative to the issues that he raised, where they considered.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about source. Yes, the campus has several wells that they are using. Their water supply, as far as flow, is fine. They have, they essentially need to disinfect their, provide secondary disinfection, which was a new requirement, which they have not yet implemented. The cost of maintaining and testing and essentially upgrading their system to meet current community standards is what's driving them to seek an alternate solution. Sources in general are, the town has two permitted sources. One is Morgan Springs, which is the secondary system. The other is Bowles Brook. is Bowles Brook, which is the primary system. Those, a source for this large of a system would require a substantially greater amount of investment on the ta- part of the town than this tank would, than this, even this tank would require, because of the requirements for what, what it would cost to ensure that that water meets EPA standards. So, from a source perspective, yes, there, there are many sources on Man Anthony, all, all around, that have more than adequate source of water, but they don't necessarily meet the EPA rules that allows it to go into a public distribution system. All of the items that Mr. Roberts mentioned, ledge, underground power, there's also, even in my experience up there, there's also lots of underground clay water lo- clay tile pipe that was used to dewater the orchard, that, that both they...
And on the west side, totally irrigated that.
Right. And it's, that water still flows today. And I've, I've, I've personally visually experienced what happens when we hit one of those lines. We've done ledge probe.
Well, it's a tank road line.
Yes. And there is an existing distribution line on SBC campus that is known about. Ledge probes were completed because of the known existence of ledge, which is factored into the price of the design, the, the proposed construction cost. And I'm, the other reason why we would not go straight up is really just due to access. The cost of, the cost of the site for a tank is really where we're going to put it, is going to be the cost. I mean, granted, there's, depending on where it goes, there might be more or less site improvement costs required for a particular facility. But the tank is the tank, the pump station is the pump station. And yes, naturally, shrink, getting the line to a certain point is, is how you minimize that is, of course, one way that you can affect the ultimate cost of the, of the project. However, the other two issues, which can be played just as big of a factor in design, is road access and power. And the proposed tank location is proximal to existing facilities with road and power access. And so, the idea of creating new access would add more cost to perhaps a shorter line. So, all of those, all of those issues were accounted for, looking at the feasibility and, and sort of studying the most, most essentially cost direct way to get us to an elevation.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ron Alderman. What I'm going to say, probably pretty redundant after the, the presentation by Jason and Stuart, when I'm here, so I'm going to say it anyways. Last vote around, I voted no. And I did that because I had a few concerns. One concern was, how was the site selected? Was it arbitrarily selected by a few people? Or was it done by an engineering firm? Another one was, was the town going to have access to this site for inspection, maintenance, repairs, and so forth? And another one was that I had read, and maybe I misunderstood, or maybe I misread before the previous vote, but the way I understood it, Southern Mount College had agreed to pay half of their hookup. That's what I understood then. But after reading Stuart's column in The Banner last week, and I followed up with a couple of emails to our town manager, the first question about how it was selected, of course, that's been explained. It's been done by MSK Engineering, which they got a pretty good reputation around.
Excellent.
And for access, I understand now that we have, the town has, a easement in perpetuity, as long as it takes, as long as we have the, the equipment up there, to go on the land for inspection, repair, and maintenance. That takes care of that one. And the other one was, like I said, I thought they were going to pay half, which I have understood over the years, that the homeowner or the business, and the college is a business, they would, any hookups would be the responsibility of the homeowner or the business. Well, now, I'm reassured again by the town manager, that the college is paying in the full shot the one hundred percent of their, the cost of their hookup. So, those questions are all, have been answered already, but like I said, I've been here for two hours, I'm going to say it anyways. The other thing about, one more thing, as I say, the timing. Granted, it won't be mandated until four years, four and a half years. But by starting now, we have the time, the town has the time, to probably get in place the proper ar tech, architects, engineers, contractors, subcontractors, whatever it takes, to get the right ones in for the right price. If we wait till the last minute, like our Vermont legislator is so prone to doing, a lot of stuff gets done haphazardly in the last few days, hours, even months in this case. So, if we do it now, we'll have the time to get it done properly, I think. That's about it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Sir, go ahead.
I'm no spring chicken, but I'm not old, and I'm not young. I'm kinda in between there. And I don't have any immediate plans of leaving the area. So, I have a concern that this may not be a permanent fix, for a problem that has reoccurred over the years. Now, it was said that it was, this problem was identified in 2007. When did the problem actually start?
What was the question again?
When did the, this low water pressure start, that we've been discussing in these areas?
I've been the superintendent since 1982, and it was, it was ongoing at that point. I think 2007 was the first time the state of Vermont actually wrote it in a permit as a system-wide deficiency. This site was looked at back when we upgraded Morgan Spring in 1990, when the, the hydrogeologist firm of Wagner Hydol Noise from up in the Burlington area came down, when we made our upgrade there, determined where the water was coming from, and where our pressures were good and bad. And I think we made a major improvement to our water filtration plant in 2005, 2006, which brought it into compliance with a lot of new upgraded EPA rules, since the plant was built in 1978. So, with that new permit, after upgrades in 2005, 2006, the state said, this is the next thing you need to focus on. Something that's been a problem for a long, long time, and it's something you need to start planning and, and get done. In the last upgrade of the permit in 2013, before we can get a permit to operate, they basically said, Mr. Raymond from the, from the water supply said, we have this problem. It's been on the radar for a long time. I need a drop dead paint. I said, well, how far will you let me go? He said, I'll give you five years, which is exactly what he did. To figure it out, get some financing together, and get this project done.
Okay. So, we've had a problem from at least 1982.
Yes.
Does anybody know that it went further back than that?
I do. I heard about it since I was a kid.
That's who, I was getting ready to ask you. When was that?
Oh, I was born in 61, so...
Okay.
They were talking about it back then.
So, we've made upgrades over the years to keep up with this.
Right.
And we're going, getting ready to do that again. We're trying to get ahead of it, get ahead of the problem.
Right.
But it keeps reoccurring.
We haven't made a major upgrade for a distribution system like this, since the tank was put on Chapel Road in the mid-sixties. That was the last time we made an improvement in the system that will allow us to increase pressure in any one point or place.
But we've never really been able to get ahead of the problem.
We've never really addressed the problem totally, I would say.
Okay. So, that's what we're talking about doing now?
Yes.
This is a permanent fix?
It is for those areas, yes.
Okay. What caused the problem over the years?
What I would say is that we allowed the system to expand outside its, its limits, all right? The rules and regulations have gotten more, much more stringent, since I've become superintendent 82. And I, and I think that the technology we possess today, in a way as Jason mentioned before, we have a system-wide computer model. When a big user comes in, or a developer comes in and says, I want to put a development on Stonehead Drive, what, what are my options? We'd say, well, nobody's complaining, so let's, let's extend that main and accommodate those eight or ten houses. In the last fifteen or twenty years, we have developed and purchased technology, and hired people like Jason here from MSK, to help us simulate what happens when you put a large development or a large industry, if they want to come in and they want 10,000 gallons a day, all right? We didn't have that tool prior to that. In about the time when we first started working with a freight, an engineering firm in Springfield, Vermont, New Frame Henry, who's no longer in business, they split up, kind of went their own way, back in the early 2000s, we saw, we started using a computer simulation model. And since that time, anytime there's been any major addition to the water system, we can do a simulation prior to approving that connection. So, a good, good example is Fox Hill off of West Road. There's a new development out there. They watered water out there. We couldn't supply, we wouldn't be right in the same situation in the upper portion of that development. So, we said, no, we can't give you water. Bill Thompson did a, a development on Hickory Hill, no water. When Mr. Moon extended off of Stonehead Drive, the Moon Development, no water, simply because we knew it was just going to add to the problem. So, I also think that we have more leverage at a local level today, on who ties on and who doesn't tie on. Prior to the early 90s, that allocation request went to the state of Vermont. And them, through pretty much this conversation, would determine if there's an allocation granted or not. Now, it's solely up in the town, whether we grant that allocation. And if there's even any concern that that is going to provide or prove to have a negative impact, we do a simulation. So, I think with the additional expertise and, and equipment that we have, I think with us taking a much closer look at, many of those homes, even at the time they were built, probably shouldn't have been built, knowing that this was a situation that was going to happen.
Did we ever have an adequate water system in this town? Ever? From the beginning of time?
I want to say that we have an adequate water system right now. Does it need improvement? Does it need upgrading? Yes.
Did...
We are meeting all of our state and federal requirements, with the exception of this one issue right now.
But we've had a water pressure problem from at least the 60s.
I agree.
And we've allowed expansion in this town. The government has allowed expansion in this town. And like you said, a lot of people probably shouldn't have come on. They said that they're going to limit the future customers, that this won't allow for a lot more customers on the system. And then you, you've explained that there's all these things to, to judge who comes in, on the system. But it does say that there will be allowed for more people to come, more customers to come on the system. Again, how can you guarantee that 10 years, 20 years, 30 years down the road, that we aren't going to have to do this again?
So, if I can just address that, this, going back to the original statement, what, what Terry's saying is, when these system, when these areas of town were brought on, they, by their construction, which is back when they weren't able to simulate the way that they do now, anticipate what that future connection will cause, how it will affect the system, and how it will affect those, those proposed areas, that they weren't able to do that before, and now they are. So, that's how they've addressed, essentially preventing future problems from occurring. With respect to these areas, now that they're on the system, the town is obligated to provide them water in accordance with the, the permits that they're, that they're granted by the state and the federal EPA. This is a maximum fire flow, a maximum flow issue. So, the, the increase in water usage in certain parts of the town may, may, there again, may or may not affect, have any measurable effect in the usage, in those, the pressures in those areas. Because we're talking about five ga- 500 gallons a minute, or 3,500 gallons a minute for, for fire flow, or 450 to 500 gallons a minute for pumping necessities, that that water system feels, versus a one gallon per minute peak demand for, or a five gallon per minute peak demand for a single-family resident, or multiples of those. So, when the, when other systems come on within the current system, when other users may want to come on in the other sys- throughout the system, that those proposed flows will be simulated in the same way that we are, have established, that if we put a 500 gallon per minute flow inside this yellow area, we're going to see pressure drops in those, in those areas. If we make this improvement, and suddenly there's, somebody wants to put another hospital at the top of Margaret Lane, like some very large institutional user, I'm not saying that that's a possibility, I'm just sort of trying to make a, a grand comparison, that that would have to be evaluated. And if they, and if it was determined that they would negatively affect any portion of the system, that they have in the past, in that scenario, been required to make improvements so that their effects would be mitigated, or they couldn't tie on, like several of the residential developments that were proposed in the last 20 years.
You're a smart guy, and you've done all these things. Have you looked at the properties that are undeveloped in this town, and projected what people may or may not do with those properties?
We...
In a small way, I think.
Yeah.
We certainly know where our industrial properties are. We know where our big users. But I think as far as residential, I think it's just a matter of if they can't be served, they can't be served, unless the developer is willing to make the improvements in the system, to our system, to adequately supply water there, that it would just be, I'm sorry, we can't...
I think what I'm getting at is the, where there would be a, a single-family dwelling, there's a lot of property in this town that could be developed into single-family homes or duplexes, maybe two-family homes. Have, what, if we did this, what would it allow for expansion on the system, let's say it's just single-family homes? A lot of people own property in this town, and they may or may not want to do anything with it. How many more single-family homes would this handle?
So, it's a loaded question you're asking. I'm not trying to be evasive, or, or allude the question in any way.
If you don't answer me.
Huh?
If you don't answer me.
I'm, I'm, but what I'm saying is that it's a complicated question that you're asking. If, Dan might be able to describe the zoning implications?
Anybody can answer.
I understand that. But you're asking a multi-step question? But you're asking a multi-step question.
I just want to go to the board here. And I want to say, I want to just sort of point out that this area is the river, right? So this is lowland. You get, everybody's got their own problem, right? You've got flood potential here, you've got low water pressure during maximum flow here. Why is that? Because we've got these plateaus. And we've also, the hospital has even been on plateau. So when there's a large demand, the hospital's got like four floors, right? So we, when we see a large water demand, their pressure at the entrance goes from like 90 PSI or like 75, 5 PSI, or if you, you're going to knock like 2.3, you're essentially going to knock 2.3 PSI per floor, it's a 10-foot floor, off of what happens at the tap every single time you go up the well. So what we're essentially doing is taking a plateau out of this larger system, which has some of the lowest land in town, right? So we're trying to sort of separate these two areas. So we're providing a tank that's going to feed this section of town because it's higher than this area, right? So basically, you're essentially making a different system, right? This system feels pressure because it's pressurized from this tank. This system feels pressure because after a pressure-reducing valve, it's essentially fed from... So what we've done is we've essentially sort of separated problems, right? These guys see really high pressure. There's a pressure-reducing valve here, there's a pressure-reducing valve up in the west side of the drive. This is further out of town to go, lower PSI. These guys actually experience very high pressure, right? So you get 150 PSI pressure at your end of your house and placed on Orchard Road. Sometimes when the fire department closes the valve, there's a hammer effect. And all that pressure happens immediately, right? So we have this pressure-reducing valve to sort of reduce that. So you're asking, what has this been allowed to expand? What we've essentially done is we did a study, and I don't have the numbers with me, so I can't tell you exactly the number of gallons per day that I've essentially added on. But when we started this project in 2009, we looked at the feasibility, the hospital had a lot of planned expansions. And so I don't know what their current status is. We haven't had that conversation again. It's now almost five years later, and things have changed. Healthcare's changed. So we have a lot of expansion here. We have, you know, the college, we knew that we were going to want to tie on the college, we came, it was an opportunity. We were going to have a tank here that's going to supply water to these people, and we're going to supply, we're going to supply one new reserve essential. And that was the plan. This is cemetery, this is the town part. There's no plans to expand water southward at this point in time. What we've planned to do is to move to East Street. There's probably four or five houses that are right at the end of the line here, that are on wells right now, that can tie on to the system. But the reason we did that wasn't because we said, "Hey, let's provide these guys with water." We don't even know if they want it. But what it's doing for us, we've got a four-inch dead-end line on Dewey Street right now. So we've got a line that flows essentially, a connection right here. This line flows dead-end all the way to about here, and then we've got another dead-end line that flows here. So we've got these two dead-end lines. And as I mentioned earlier, dead-end lines cause maintenance problems. You have, you have one guy at the end of a four-inch line pulling a little bit of water out of the big pipe, right? And you get stagnation issues. So the way that we manage a distribution system is by looping those lines. Essentially, we provide multiple ways that water can flow, so water constantly flowing around. So the reason why we didn't just say, "Hey, let's hook up, we'll go through the college and we'll tie on this way." We said, "No, the hospital has fine infrastructure, let's solve this other problem, because it's not going to be substantially more expensive to do that." And it ends up making a better distribution system. So really, the short answer is, you had some institutional expansion plan, you had a little bit of institutional expansion plan here, you looked at the potential development in this area, and we tried to figure out if there were any undeveloped lots in those areas that might have a house put on, and we added those in. Really, there's really no planned expansion in this area, because we're not planning on extending south. And there again, essentially, all this surrounding area is an area that's not going to see any development or any major development at all.
I know there's some land for sale at the end of Margaret Lane, so I don't know.
There's land for sale at the end of Margaret?
If I might, Jason, I think the short answer to the question is, the plan is not based on expansion.
Right.
It's based on improving the existing system. However, if there were potential new customers in the pressure zone, they would be better served by what is there now.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. So if you add someone in... Is it going to get us even, or are we going to be ahead with this? Are we going to be way ahead of the problem? Are we going to be just even, and then maybe down the line, we're going to have the same problem?
Well, if the construction is maintained within the pressure zone, we'll be ahead of the problem. If we go ahead and start building outside the pressure zone, we're going to get into the same problem.
That's what caused the problem to begin with, right?
We're going to be, if I can answer your question, there is a buffer of design flow in this design. And it's there at a reasonable level. I just want to reiterate that. We want it to be, there's no reason for us to put a 2 million gallon tank up there. One, because I'd then create a stagnation problem for the water department, because there isn't enough flow.
What, if I can remember this correctly, have it prepared, so you're testing a little off guard?
That's what I'm here for.
I know, I appreciate that. The final build-out for this is going to be about 350,000 gallons per day in this area. So right now, the current usage, and I'm sure I'm going to be long on these numbers, so if you ever want to...
That's all right, I'll cut you some slack.
You want to come in and see the preliminary engineering study, I can look through all the Excel files for you, you can actually look at it in detail. This area here uses just a little over 200,000 gallons right now. So, and then what we did was we said, "What happens if there's a demand fire in this area, and how much water are they going to need?" And then we basically had it on top. Then we went backwards and said, "Okay, we're using a quarter million gallons, 200,000 gallons right now, how much time will it take to turn that tank over?" And that's essentially how we came up with the 750,000 gallons. So, and then we started looking at pump times. So I mean, these are more detailed questions than I'm sure anyone else wants to go. But that sort of, there's room, there's a little bit of room for it to mention, but we're not trying to, you know, take over the south end of town and further into town to develop this water system further than that's not the town.
The reason I ask, there's land that's owned, there's building lots, there could be, land could be subdivided and sold as lots. We just had a hospital close in North Adams, and a good share of those patients are coming to this hospital. It won't take them long to figure out that if they expand, they can make a lot of money off of that. That's a heck of a way to make money, but this is what I see coming...
And that's why, when we went to, when we started the feasibility study, one of the first questions we asked was, "What's the use now?" And then we went to each of the, sort of the key players that we knew would have the potential to have a great future demand in the system later on. And we said, "What are your ideal plans? What are the plans that you want, that you can see forever?" And those were the questions that we asked, and we built those numbers into the system. Two lot subdivisions, this lot on the end of Stonehenge subdivides, you know, not, overall system, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I'd like to make one point there, Jason, and that is, is that just because we have 750,000 gallons in the tank, doesn't mean we're going to allocate it to the hospital because they want to make an expansion. That's going to be something that we will decide as a group, as an administrative staff, as a board, and say, "Okay, but if you're going to take 20% of our expandable capacity, you've got to give something back." You mean they're going to pay for additional upgrade of a tank, additional upgrade of a pump station, additional upgrade of a line, so that we're not, we're not, this project isn't based on, much as Greg said, it's not based on expansion. It's based on properly serving the people in those areas that now have, you know, a lack of water pressure at times. So as we move forward from here, we'll use our computer simulation studies, we'll look at, we'll look at impacts, that kind of thing. But just because there is something available there, doesn't mean we're going to give it away. I think that, you know, maybe in years past, that's been more of a thing to do, but because the developer comes in and wants to put a 20 lot subdivision in, and use up all of our reserves, I mean, we have to sit back, you know, as responsible people for the water department, and the town, and the rain there, and say, "What's the impact there? What, does the developer, the hospital, whoever, it's a little bit, what do they have to participate in order to allow them to tie on?" So I think the thinking has changed. It's in there, but it's not there for the taking. There has to be some trade-off there for, you know, that kind of expansion.
Does that answer your question?
That answers that question. I've got some easier ones. The affected areas, what are the elevation? You know that.
Not off the top of my head.
Well, under 1140.
It's not...
It's going to be a...
No, with the Margaret?
So Margaret and the other one are above the same?
Above Stonehenge?
Yeah.
I think you're going to look across, yeah? Well, I can look across, so you'll get the hospital, but I'm going to look south.
How far above those will this tank be?
There again, I can't recall exactly the elevation.
What's the highest level, elevation of the red area? Do you know that?
That I don't know.
That's what we're trying to find out.
That would be at the end of Margaret area. From there on down, it goes down, it goes down towards Morgan Street, or it goes down to, I think it is that comes in there.
On Circle, right?
On Circle, on the other side, where they wanted to build two, but then they said, "No."
So basically, we're not going too far above the affected areas with the tank? Just a little bit, maybe?
Just enough to get the flow.
If it's 900, 1100?
It's not that easy of a calculation.
Couple hundred feet.
It's a more complicated calculation than that, yeah.
Are there any other areas above those affected areas where a tank could go? Could a tank go just above Margaret Lane on that hill?
No.
Why?
It wouldn't provide the pressure necessary.
That's not...
The elevation isn't high enough.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Just, okay, we need to provide...
See, I don't have a map.
No, and it doesn't...
Right? But I know there's some elevation above that.
Okay, we need to provide, they have...
I know about water pressure, I just need to know what the difference is.
I understand that, but we've got dynamic water pressure, it's not just standing water pressure, right? So that's why the elevation right next to Margaret Lane would not provide adequate pressure to Margaret.
Okay, so you've looked at that?
Yes. Yes.
That's the highest areas in the range of all the town, up and down.
Right, yeah. Okay, now an observation on the, the issues that we've had with water this year with pressure? One was the fire. Used a lot of water pressure. There was a river right there, right next to that fire, that flows constantly. If they had used the water from that river to extinguish the fire, there wouldn't have been a water pressure problem that day, right?
They looked at that, and I believe that they tried to do some drafting, but as you might recall, it was like...
It was cold.
Ten below zero.
Right.
They had a problem, they had a problem getting water out of our hydrant once they shut it out in about 15 minutes, 100% of all. So they often, their best opportunity to keep it contained anyway, was to use water off the system. In a normal situation, I don't know if you recall, there was a fire and a young man died in right down the street here. They didn't have hydrants in a close enough proximity, they moved right over here to the water sack and tied out all the...
So proud of the mine, that's why I was thinking that.
So if they have that opportunity, I think they certainly will use it.
It wouldn't be the first time they've done that.
That down there only was because of the whole temperature.
Two of the other occasions were flushing hydrants. If you had reduced the amount of flow from the hydrant, successfully flushed the hydrant by a lower pressure?
See, it's a matter of, it's not just opening the hydrant, you have to produce a certain number of gallons of flow in order to move debris in the main.
Okay.
In order to do that, basically you have to have two hydrants lined open in succession.
Can I interject here for a second? You've got a lot of specific questions.
No, I've only got a couple more, and it's short.
You're welcome to come to Terry's office and look at this stuff in detail.
In Terry's office, the rest of the people won't hear anything.
So that's why we can't come back on that.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, I have to entertain that motion, and I have a second.
Abby still wants to talk.
I would, I would, my comment on that would be, I would like to, yeah, I would like to let some other people speak before we close that, if that's okay with, but I'm going to have to put it to a vote. I think we've given you a fair time to ask a lot of questions.
Fair time.
There's a lot of people here.
A lot of money.
Yeah, there's a lot of people here, and we've been talking about this a while, and I respect it, but you're invited to come to the town and look at these studies, because you're asking questions if people have looked at things that have been on designs for a long time. It's been available to the public for a long time.
He didn't have the answers.
He has them in the office. If you want to make an appointment, he's got them.
If you'd like to drop us a line, when he answers to you, you can send the chairman, we can put him on our website.
Could I come to the next meeting and ask those questions? Could I come to the next meeting?
We could have them for, we could have the answers for you at the next meeting, sure.
There you go.
If that's, if I can have those answered.
Well, you know where I'm getting at, and he's right, and so...
Yeah, no, I want to keep it moving, there's other people who do want to speak.
And to be fair to the other people, I'll...
But I do have a motion on the table.
I want to rescind my second, I'd like to hear Abby speak.
All right. Abby, if you'd like some, come up, please.
Chair, he had the floor, right?
Yes, he did. And we've asked him to step down from the...
As long as he has the floor.
We don't really...
As long as he has the floor.
You do not have the floor, sir.
Which he is now.
Yeah, I think he understands.
And then you link it, the floor, to the next person, and that's really slight bar.
Thank you.
Thank you for the help. Abby.
Hi, I'm Abby Shapiro, for anyone who doesn't know me, and thank you, Jason. This is, and Stuart for bringing him and for answering my questions, those were my questions. This is way more information than we've had prior to this, and I have a better understanding of it, and just that. Could you possibly switch back to the slide about the figures, the numbers?
Which, which slide?
Oh, I'm sorry, the projection for the next five, six years, the one near the end. Keep going?
Come on.
Hopefully this is it.
That's...
Are there any guarantees to this? Because I've heard a lot of maybes, it's likely, it's possible, we think that, and I guess what I'm looking for is, 3% a year is not good, but it's certainly more reasonable than some of the 41% we've paid over the past three years. Do we have any guarantees of any sort? Because, and the reason I say this is, three, four years ago, when we, when the select board made the decision that we had held rates artificially low for all these years and we were going to catch up, there was almost a promise, in fact, I think there was a promise, that this was the big thing. And then the second we completed that, suddenly the bond came, and we know now that this project has been in the works for a long time. These numbers are numbers that a person who has a household budget can start to understand. I want a new car, I have a 10-year-old car. I can't afford one this year, but I'm projecting out. I'm going to put money in reserve, I'm going to figure out how to pay for it, I'm going to probably have to take out a loan of some sort, but if I plan ahead, then it's smaller. So what I want to know is, what guarantees do we have that there will be money put aside, that we will keep rates down? And that goes back to you guys.
Well, I'd like to answer that first. Those are policy issues, clearly, and that is the policy right now, is, you know, I think we've all agreed that the depreciation thing was an important thing to get our arms around. Many of us were not on the board when that decision was made. Personally, I'm glad it was made, because it will help deal with situations like this and help... and help defray costs of the bonds. Certainly, depending on who's on the board at what time, that's going to affect policy. I can give you my guarantee that as long as I'm on the board, that's the way I want to go. I cannot speak for other board members or people who have never been, not yet been elected to the board. So this is certainly the plan. The numbers are sound. I think that the numbers make sense. It's certainly plausible. I think it is up to the voters, us as voters, to make sure that that policy is, is followed. You're a great example of due diligence as a, as a citizen. I mean, you have to let people know that that's what you want to do. Are they underfunding the system? Are they overfunding the system? Where, where do they stand? You know, where do you stand? So, any other?
Just to confirm, Abby, these numbers are accurate. What Terry and, and my finance director, Melissa Courier, did is they took the existing projects that we're now working on, and we know the cost of those. We took the South End upgrade, and we know the estimated cost of those because that still has to be bid. And then we went an additional five years out on our capital, capital plan, which was developed to take a look at what new equipment we'll be buying, the new trucks, those kinds of pieces of equipment we'll be replacing. So all of the numbers that you see there are based on real numbers, yes. They're projected into the future. I mean, you don't know whether that pickup truck's going to cost you thirty-five or forty thousand dollars in the future, but you're doing your best estimating. And the depreciation is based on those figures, and that's a calculation that a finance director makes using standard practices. And the, I think the only variable that you're going to see over the next five years is what happens to the costs of materials, fuel, electricity, labor, and benefits. Those are, those are the variables that aren't figured into the depreciation in the capital asset schedule. Traditionally, the board has kept labor costs and benefits costs below the cost of inflation, and I expect that that will continue. They have always been very difficult in that regard.
I guess one more question in relation to that, and this is for Terry, and I don't mean this in any negative way. But looking at these numbers, will you be doing things within the department to try and stay close to them? Will you be looking at efficiencies within your departments?
Absolutely. I'll give you one quick, one quick. In the wastewater department, this last year, we worked with efficiency Vermont, did thirteen thousand dollars worth of upgrade under a grant program that we were completely reimbursed for, and now we will see the, reap the benefits of that program, you know, as long as we do business. That's just one of the many. I, I can say, these numbers here are probably as accurate numbers as I'm able to produce moving forward. I think that me, Melissa and I have spent more time in the last two fiscal years trying to really point a good projection together for five, six, even eight years out, and that's exactly where these numbers come from. So we intend to live within this budget. Obviously, if we have a catastrophic failure somewhere in the system, we hope that our reserve fund will help us take care of that, but other than that, what you see here is what we intend to work with.
Abby, and I have to say, on, as far as my history on the select board, you know, water and sewer, highway department, I don't care what department it is, they come to the board with very frugal budgets on, at budget time. And if they do get two pie in the sky, we rein them in. You know, if, if they can get by with a twenty-five thousand dollar truck as opposed to a forty thousand dollar truck, they have the twenty-five thousand dollar truck instead. So, you know, we oversee the budgets. I mean, they, they go back and, you know, work their budgets and, and come in with really very good budgets. One or two percent increase, maybe, it depends, you know, and then we look at it again and sometimes cut it even more. So if he doesn't do it, the board does. So you're saying with some complete certainty, and I just want to make it really clear for people who can't read this, that you anticipate that water rates will go up approximately three percent, starting in two thousand and sixteen up to two thousand and nineteen, three percent per year, and that we as citizens can take that, well, not as a hundred percent, but certainly as reasonable certainty?
I think we could even reword it to say that we would not, we would be looking to look for not more than three percent to cover the cost of the bond, the system and depreciation.
I would agree.
So that was the goal, is to, and give you something concrete that you can walk away with.
Thank you.
And I thank you. We have one more? Okay. State your name, please.
My name's Steve Hoyt. Live right here in Bennington. I have no problems with water pressure. I'm at like a hundred and twenty-four pounds at my house. Where we're putting the tank, isn't that basically right on the Morgan Springs aquifer? I mean, have we looked into tapping into that so we know that we'll never run out of water there?
Well, the problem isn't water, this has come up before, the problem is not water quantity, it's pressure. It's getting, it's getting water to a point that'll serve the neighborhoods that are in a low pressure zone.
What I'm saying is, if we're putting the tank right on the aquifer.
We'd still have to treat it.
Wouldn't it be feasible, though, to, to get the water right from Morgan Springs?
Well, we'd either have to put a treatment plant there, or pump it down to the treatment plant and pump it back up.
So it's more cost effective to pump it up?
To just pump it up once.
And our costs include like a generator house and stuff in case we lose power?
Yeah, we have, we have backups on the.
All included in all these costs?
Yes.
Because there will have to be a generator station too, right?
The new pump station?
Yeah.
We have a portable generator that we can operate that with, a trailer mount.
That'll pump the water back into the tank?
Yes.
Okay, those are just my questions.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to speak, sir? It's almost my bedtime.
You've been very patient.
I'm the one popular guy from the state who made it up today, three hours from Waterbury. Eric Law is the name. I represent the State Revolving Loan Fund Programs in Montpelier, one of which is the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund, which provides low-cost financing for water system improvements to protect public health and the environment. That's what you're tapping into right now. To be good to your comment much earlier in, in this meeting, SVC really did give you the points to be in the fundable range, because each year we get a capitalization grant and a state match. We pull it together, and demand way outstrips the supply, right? So we have to prioritize based on public health. This project does get public health points, for sure, but it's near the bottom because the state is in desperate need throughout the state, okay? So SVC's points, okay, dealing with a microbiological contamination problem, put Bennington in the fundable range at three percent twenty, with a two-year delayed repayment start date, okay? If, now, I'm a financier, I'm in environmental finance, I'm not in regulation. I can tell you one thing, though, is this problem is not going away. That, that is true, okay? So is it going to be cheaper? The discussion, this is a local decision, for sure. It's not going to be handled in Montpelier, I can tell you that much. But you gotta, you gotta ask yourself the question, if the problem's not going away, is it cheaper now to deal with it than wait four years? I can tell you, being close to financing, that it's going to be a whole lot cheaper now than it will in four years. Three and a half percent with a bond bank, that's, if it's not already going up, it'll, it'll pop up.
More to your point, sir. I believe, Stu, fifteen years ago, the, the price for this was one point five million. Is that right?
Ooh, I couldn't.
Right around there?
Boy, you're taxing my, my mind beyond.
Figure that I heard through various individuals, and now we're, if we don't have SVC's participation, we're approaching four million, and it's not going to get cheaper.
Right. So you have three percent twenty, you have two years repayment start date, okay? You have cost sharing, you have economies of scale. I think the real question everybody has to ask themselves is, is the problem going away? And if it's not, and you're going to pay for it four years from now, what's that going to cost? And you have to compare it to what it'll cost in two thousand and fourteen dollars. I can tell you that SVC's points is what got the town of Bennington in the money now. It's a snapshot. You have to have a ready-to-receive project, or the money's going to someone else. That's how it works. You have a funding cycle, it's about a year, and you have to have a voter approval. If you don't, the money's going to another project. You can get on the next year's priority list, okay? But this year, with these costs, these assumptions, it has to be a pass by. Again, local decision, not, not going to be done in Montpelier, but something to think about.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the Water System Improvement Board.
A second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that concludes the public portion of the hearing. Any of the board members have any other questions for Terry or Jason before?
Thank you for the public.
Yeah, let's see, what we've, certainly, we're going to take five, let everybody clear out and look at our agenda here.
Well, all right, whatever's going to be the fastest.
Do you have anything on the manager report that needs to go tonight?
I'm going to say no.
I have the originals.
Stuart has the originals for everybody to sign.
This is the borrowing for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
Need a motion to waive the reading?
Do that.
Okay.
And we're, we're proposing to borrow two million dollars this year. The, the bank, People's United Bank was the winner. I think, I believe three banks bid, fourth one declined, so we're getting an incredible interest rate. Joni, what is the interest rate?
Point eight percent.
Wow.
So if you.
God, we're paid muted.
If you, if you waive the reading of the note and the resolution, there are at least two documents, three documents that need to be signed by the board. Several of those need to be signed by the clerk, who has left us, and, and Ms. Pace, you know, the treasurer, and that can be done by one vote.
We have a motion to waive the reading?
Yes.
Second? So, second, any discussion?
Just that I, for four more days, am an employee of People's United Bank, but do not have anything to do with government banking, which is the department that handles this.
Okay, all in favor? That's five.
I shall circulate those for your signatures, and Joni will take them when they get to the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are three different documents.
Did we put on the waiver of the reading?
Yes, the waivering of the reading.
Okay.
Then we just sign the.
We don't have, we don't need a motion on the borrowing. We just sign it.
No, by, by making the motion to waive the reading of the, of the tax anticipation note and the resolution, you have basically approved the borrowing. How many spots are there to sign just one?
Not enough, so you have to kind of.
There are three pages there. I'm sorry I didn't put little arrows on them to make them easier to find.
Need arrow.
You're fired. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're going to waive the manager report tonight. We have a, a presentation on the, on the agenda today that we're going to push to the next meeting, but I just wanted to bring it forward. Mark, Dan, we, it's the Applegate Pathway Grant, and this is an application for a grant. We need a decision to, to be applying for that grant by the next meeting, so we were trying to get that on this meeting, so it would be, the public would have time to chime in and we would be able to get some information. Mark, do you want to do a quick two-minute introduction on what that is? And, uh, Mark Anders from the BCRC is the lead on this, and then we'll have the, we can do the presentation at the next meeting.
So my name is Mark Anders. I'm a planner with the Bennington County Regional Commission, and I'm putting together an application to E-Trans Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant, and the project is for a path that will connect Applegate Apartments to Willowbrook Drive, which is a municipally-owned road. It's Town Highway eighty-six. And the reason I feel this is a really important project is, there is no pedestrian access to Applegate Apartments. Applegate Apartments is a major residential neighborhood in Bennington. There are, I think, a hundred and four units in Applegate. There are about, last count, there are a hundred and seven kids that live in Applegate. And one of the big issues is, kids are bused to the Moistart School, just less than half a mile away, while kids from Willowbrook, which is only five hundred feet from Applegate, just walk to school. So what this path will do, it will connect the Applegate to Willowbrook Drive, and kids will be able to walk to school if they want to. It just gives kids more, more transportation options. The, the Moistart School says they have a absentee, absenteeism problem, because when kids miss the bus, they don't have a way to get to school, so this would address that. So that's really what the, we did a scoping study about a year ago, actually Jason was engineering a scoping study, coincidentally. Oh, it is, okay, so, sorry.
So this is, this is something.
Yeah, so basically, this is Applegate, and Orchard Road is the road that connects Applegate with the Moistart School. There are very big embankments on Orchard Road, so building the sidewalk is not really feasible. The only really feasible way to provide the rest of your connection is through the wet line across this private property. So that's, that's really what the project is. This is the path, this is what's there now. Obviously, there's a need. People have made this makeshift grail jet, a shopping cart of plank.
And Mark, without wrecking the, the impact of your presentation for next time, could you just tell the board what you're going to be looking for from us?
Yes, okay, so what I'm looking for is, in order to qualify for this grant, we need the town to agree to accept the easements for the path. That's really what we're asking. And the reason for that is, it's federal and state money. They don't want to give money, they want to be able to guarantee that the public have access in the future, so that's why the town would, it would basically be an extension of Willowbrook Drive. It would be a sort of a pedestrian extension of Willowbrook Drive, I think that's the best way to think about it. And there's no maintenance obligation. Housing Vermont has signed a maintenance agreement, so the town will not have to maintain it, they would just have to hold the easements. So that's the most important thing we're asking for. The less important thing, but still sort of important thing, is that the town be a co-applicant. Municipalities, school districts, and regional commissions can apply. The school district has agreed to be a co-applicant, and the regional commission is going to be an applicant, so I think it would be a stronger application if the town were also an applicant.
Now, this is all, it's on town property?
It is not, it's on three properties. It will, it will connect with Willowbrook Drive, which is a town highway. So I think the way to think about it is, it's like extending Willowbrook Drive just a little bit for pedestrians. That's, that's sort of how I like to think about it.
Can you have a right of way from the Lammers?
We, we have, I have talked to the Lammers personally, and they are willing to grant an easement. You know, right of way is always, is always complicated.
I mean, I sit on the Applegate Board, and this is something that we've talked about for a number of years, is connecting the two, the two projects together, so that they can bring the two communities together as far as like after-school programs and summer programs and that kind of thing. So it's much safer than, than having the kids walk down Orchard Drive, which is, has no shoulder at all.
So, all this is in our package for tonight, so I'd ask the board to do is look through this. Anybody who has comments for the board on this, or wants to come next week, see this presentation. Let's do that.
Just one addition, that's not a damn, just to say, well, these lines, we have secured from both the school district and Housing Vermont to manage this project, so.
So that has been taken.
Really, a little bit from the town, I can imagine, but even hopefully be collab.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, you making a motion, Doc? You want to wait until next week?
No. It, it's just, it, it's okay to go towards an application, right? There's no money.
So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I think, you know, our policy is, when we get these things, to have the thought process to go to the next meeting. I know it's just somewhat.
And everybody, somebody always makes a motion.
I rescind my motion.
You rescind your motion?
You receive your second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think it was.
I'd like to make the presentation. I, I would feel better if the president, and the public had a chance to see it. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's a great project, but I think.
Actually, we do have to have a public hearing for the application.
Actually, we do have to have a public hearing for the application, so we should do it.
Yes, yeah, public presentation, so that will be next, that will be in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mark, appreciate it, sorry for...
Any questions as we read through the information this last night?
Thanks, John.
Yes, sir.
Um, anything else that we need to accomplish tonight? Do you want to do the board appointments?
Do you want to do the appointments?
Yeah, let's do that, it'll take you two minutes.
I'd like to, Joe Hall, uh, make a motion that Joe Hall be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Committee.
All right, we have a motion, second?
Second.
Justin, all right, we have Justin, all, any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous.
Who will agree?
Jeffrey Golds.
Jeffrey Golds, so he'll be reappointed to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous, all right, um, any other business for?
Quick, quick question.
Quick question?
River Road, comes up there yesterday, looks like half the road is in the...
Sorry?
River Road, did you go up the hill?
Yes.
Is that our responsibility to make?
Yes, it is, uh, and we, uh, we have, uh, engaged, uh, two engineering firms to take a look at it, it was repaired, uh, this time last year, um, and continued to slide, it's literally sliding on the, the sub, substrata, uh, we're, as yet, not entirely certain how we're gonna stabilize it, but it looks like it's gonna be a very, very large construction job. Uh, we have set some monies aside, um, in, in, in the, in the reserve to attempt to deal with it, but it will be a project we'll be facing, uh, towards the end of this construction season.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second, anyone?
Second. Nobody was gonna second that, come on.
Thank you, everybody, see you in two weeks, thanks, all the people coming out.
He's got a second. You need that? Need it tonight, second session?
Please, we keep saying...
He's making a motion.